Junior. Honorable Herman M. Daniels.
Good morning, President.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels, present. Honorable Mark A. Freeland.
Good morning, President.
Honorable Mark A. Freeland is present. Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr.
Good morning, President.
Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. is present. Honorable Key Allen Bagay, Jr. Chairman, you have five members available, which is established as a quorum. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. We're on invocation. Honorable Stewart, Chitchele, and Hachad Elson.
Good morning, Chairman. Okay. Heavenly Father God, we come to you this morning again to convene during our regular RDC meeting. Today, Heavenly Father God, thank you for this wonderful day you created with the moisture. You blessed us with the snow, the rain as well across the United States and Navajo Nation. Heavenly Father God, thank you for this moisture. Heavenly Father God, so that our plants and vegetation may grow again upon the earth. Heavenly Father God, I thank you for for that. And thank you for the two-hour delay as well for our employees so they get to work in safety as well. Heavenly Father God, with the snow on the roads and the ice on the roads, Heavenly Father God, we look out for their safety like that. Heavenly Father God, so that they get to work in a safe way. Heavenly Father God, and they return home as well in safety. And Heavenly Father God, I ask you to be with all of our leadership. Heavenly Father God, 24th Navajo Nation Council, also with the executive branch, our speaker, Mr. So, and also President, Vice President, Chief Justice, Joan Jane, Chief Justice on that side, and the judicial branch employees as well. Heavenly Father God, I ask you to watch over our county, federal, state workers as well, and leadership as well. Heavenly Father God, I ask you to be with them this morning as well. Heavenly Father God, I ask you about all of our families, near and far, Heavenly Father God, wherever they may be, whatever they be doing for work, Heavenly Father God, be with them. At this time, Heavenly Father God, bless their day as well. Heavenly Father God, as a vehicle that blesses, they get us to and from our destination and safety. Bless those vehicles for us, and us our homes. And then we always feel with love, faith, hope, and charity, Heavenly Father God, in that way, Heavenly Father God. We pray to you this morning like that. Heavenly Father God, and ask you about all of our animals, and all the animals that you have created as well, Heavenly Father God, and walk upon some other earth and there are underwater and skies, Heavenly Father God, I ask you bless them for us at this time like that. Heavenly Father God, I ask you bless all of our practitioners as well, Heavenly Father God, our roadmen, our medicine men, Heavenly Father God, pastors and our preachers, Heavenly Father God, that we go to, to talk with at times, Heavenly Father God, I ask you bless them for us this time, their songs and their prayers as well, Heavenly Father God, and the positive words that they say to us in that way, Heavenly Father God, I ask you to be with them at this time, Heavenly Father God, continue to help them and guide them as they continue to do their best, Heavenly Father God. For Navajo Nation people, Heavenly Father God, when they talk to them and give them guidance, Heavenly Father God, I ask you bless all our doctors and nurses in the hospitals, Heavenly Father God, all of our educators as well, Heavenly Father God, and all of our veterans, Heavenly Father God, those that have served, Heavenly Father God, and those that are also serving at this time, Heavenly Father God, our military personnel overseas in the United States, I will be with them, and also our first responders, our police officers, Heavenly Father God, our EMTs, Heavenly Father God, our firefighters, Heavenly Father God, bless them for us this time, Heavenly Father God, bless all of our councils as well, they do their best, Heavenly Father God, help individuals who are still recovering, Heavenly Father God, from depression or from whatever illness that they may have, Heavenly Father God, that they try to do their best on a daily basis, Heavenly Father God, from a situation they may have encountered before, Heavenly Father God, I ask you to be with them at this time, Heavenly Father God, bless those councils as well, Heavenly Father God, and their words of encouragement to these individuals, Heavenly Father God, be with them at this time and that. And our agenda as well, Heavenly Father God, today, things we're going to talk about this morning for this short time that we come together, probably before we get our regular session with the council, so with Navajo yet again, Heavenly Father God, these things, Heavenly Father, I pray to you for this time, Heavenly Father God, I see for giving my shortcomings, my short faults, Heavenly Father God, as well, Heavenly Father God, and I'll be with them at that time in that way, Heavenly Father God. These things again, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Yes, Chitchele, thank you. That could on Hachad Elson, and over the nation, she ain't got me clean, though, let the benebe here. Mr. Tahie, do you have any announcements for us?
The chair members of RDC, my announcement is today at eight o'clock, Navi will resume its special session, and at one o'clock today, Navajo Nation Council will ravine a special session, which will continue tomorrow morning as well at 8:00 a.m. Chair members of RDC, that is my announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. Honorable members of RDC, any other announcements? I hear none. We'll go down to number two. Honorable Freeland, go ahead.
Chairman, good morning. Our colleagues and staff, and I see a lot of Taliya's there for your prayer. Chairman, I request, I have a legislation on the agenda. I don't know if I can get it on to Navi today. This has to do with the cooperation agreement, cooperative agreement between Navajo Fish and Wildlife and Arizona Department of Game and Fish. I don't know if my little brother, if he would be willing to chair or sign off on the report, I don't know if Mr. Tahie could get the report out today. I know this is probably going to be our last Navi. If there's any way we could get this legislation on to the Navi agenda for today, for Navajo Fish and Wildlife, it'd be so helpful. I don't know if we can do it, but it's worth a shot to ask, Chairman. That's my request this morning. Thank you.
Honorable Freeland, there's two legislations this morning under new business A and B, which is 251 as well as 274. They need to go to Nabakia Te, and 0261 is RDC has final authority on that, so Mr. Tahie did mention to me that he'll send me the committee reports right away, and I can just email it back to him so you can put it on Navi. Mr. Tahie?
Chair members of RDC, I'm delighted, your feeling Chairman is correct. What we're going to do is we're going to get the committee report sent over via PDF and have Chairman sign it, and I will sign the vote tallies as well, and we will have it ready for Navi to be added on to the agenda. I will make a travel up to Chairman's residency later on to get his original signature, which is required, but we can take, Navi can take action on both legislation that will be which Navi has final authority on. Chairman, members of RDC, back to Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on announcements?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Tahie, I guess I'm gonna go get another cup of coffee then. Thank you.
Get a double dose, Honorable Freeland. We're on number two. We'll just have introductions for RDC and stuff. Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
Yes, Chairman, committee members, little staff, and the listeners that we have today, and the meeting participants yet. Thomas Walker, Jr., I'm a member of the Resource Development Committee, and I am the Vice Chair. Although I represent five chapters out in Western Agency, the chapters are City, To, Luke, Talani Lake, Cameron, and Coleman Canyon chapters. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Key Allen Bagay, Jr. Honorable Daniels?
Thank you, Chair. Honorable Daniel, Jr.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Good morning, Chairman, Chairman and colleagues, adult staff, and all the Nigi. Everyone that's listening on this morning, good morning from Eastern Agency. I'm pointing there. We're blessed with some moisture. I hear no snow, but we've got some moisture, and we're thankful for every opportunity we get to give some moisture to the land. She Mark Freeland, she had a lot of the Nigi, totally, she's not looking, I need you to tend to kind of the city, I don't turn up at the end of the summer. I call it the social card, a day, a day, it's not shy. I have eight chapters out here, Eastern Navajo, don't know how to just keep to I have a centi, White Rock. Lake Valley, Herfano, and I is a good morning to one and all. And I want to, of course, wish you all a prosperous and happy New Year to you and your families, and blessings for a great 2023. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Stewart?
Yes, good morning, Chairman. Shana, I don't know if I have a vice chair, I don't know, I can't. RDC members, and I can get into the staff, Mr. Tahim, Mr. Mo's, and Shama's, Kanto, I'm not scared, eh, don't you want to tell me this morning? Yeah, Wilson C. Stewart, Jr., eh, and she had a lot of chutzpah, eh, and she's not, now, I should try to change it, but she's changing, trying to change it, that she do, between the channel. I don't know about the shaggy, eh, yeah, clear. Do you but at the leggy communities and let me get out, so I don't be elchid, once it's done, he did it. From the 45th Agency, out of 45th Agency, the representation for the Resource Development Committee, the 24th Navajo Nation Council, our consortium, I thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Bagay? Yeah, I recognize you, she got my son, and he's now, is that she in, but she's changing, I'll be there, she do, can't, I need her, she's not a six chapters, when I should get hog back, San Juan, and I think that upper fruit, and Burnham, and they come, yeah, they're the non. So, we have our staff, Mr. Tahie?
Good morning, Chairman, members of RDC, those online. My name is Rodney Tahie. I'm the Legislative Advisor for Resource and Development Committee. I'm Hianani, and Sanja Kenna, and I'm originally from Steva, Arizona. Back to Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mo's.
Morning, Chair. Jay, Leonard Mo's, she twenty seven, and I'm sure. I'm sure she's no, I don't know, I'm about to change, she that she do, I'm about to, she not a Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Con.
Oh, good morning, Don, so, the nation, eh, yeah, eh, Resources and Development Committee members, don't know, Seneki, I do staff, don't know, Seneki, the many of you on the executive branch and the legislative branch who have joined us on this call. Thank you very much for rising early and being with us. I don't care, hence, I go, she, I your beautiful prayer always finds a place in my heart because we talk spirituality, we talk things that we don't see, things we feel, things we know are there that cannot see with your eyes all the time. Thank you very much for putting us in this beautiful place of our mind. She Mariana Khan, she's a, don't know, and she's a, eh, toy, he's cleaning, she's like, I'm happy, but she's cheating, last year, that she cheat, then I check in it, I shouldn't allow I could, I was standing, she's like, I'm speaking to you from Tali, Wheatfields area. Right now, we've got five inches of snow, and it's still coming. Good morning to one and all.
Thank you, Ms. Con. Mr. Yates from Speaker's Office?
Thank you for the introduction, Chairman. Good morning. Good morning, other members of the Resources and Development Committee and those participating in the meeting. My name is Joaquin Yates. I'm with the Office of the Speaker, Legislative Staff Assistant. I'm originally from Nambé Pueblo. Thank you very much for joining us all.
Thank you. We do have on the call with us, Mr. Leo Watchman, Department of Agriculture. We also have Mr. Charles Impheel, CKP, as well as Jeff Cook. We also have Tanner Be Gay from Burnham, Chapter, Grazing Official, on the call with us this morning. So, we'll move down to number three, reviewing and approving the agenda. Mr. Tahie, could you read the agenda for us?
Chair members of RDC, your proposed agenda reads as follows. Resource and Development Committee of the 24th Navajo Nation Council, regular meeting Wednesday, December 28, 2022, 7:00 a.m. Presiding, Honorable Ricky Nas, Chairperson. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr., Vice Chairperson. Location, via telecommunication. One, call meeting to order, roll call invocation announcements. Two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Three, reviewing and approving the agenda. Four, reviewing and approving the journal, none. Five, receiving reports, none. Six, old business, none. Seven, new business. A, legislation 0251-22, an act relating to budget and finance, resource and development, and Navi Nick Committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council, amending CMY-54-18 to extend through crop year 2028, the Sisasun Fund guaranteed for the Navajo Nation's annual premiums for the rainfall index pasture, range, land, and forage plot insurance program administered by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, sponsor Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr., co-sponsor Honorable Jamie Henyo. B, legislation number 0261-22, an action relating to Resource and Development Committee, approving it the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund project plan for crop year 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021, pursuant to the Sisasun's Fund, pasture, range, and forage expenditure plan enacted by CO-57-16, and amended by CMY-54-18, sponsor Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. C, legislation number 0274-22, an actual relating to Resource and Development Committee, and the Navi Gang Committee, approving and authorizing that intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Gaming and Fish Commission by the Arizona Gaming and Fish Department and the Navajo Nation Department. Sponsor Honorable Mark A. Freeland, co-sponsor Honorable Edison J. Winika. Eight, close of meeting announcements and adjournment. Chair members of RDC, that is the proposed agenda read into the record. Back to Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second. Motion, Key Allen. Honorable Bagay, good morning, yet there, and a here a second.
Chairman, I say.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Thank you. Any comments or questions on the agenda? I hear none. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote Green, Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Gay?
Uh, Cal, what's green? Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
I vote Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
I vote Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green, Chairman.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, turn not voting, motion carries. We have an approved agenda before us, as is number four, reviewing and approving journals, none. Number five, receiving reports, none. Six, old business, none. Number seven, new business, A, legislation 0251-22, sponsor. Honorable Stewart is on the call. Mr. Tahie, could you read this into the record, sir?
Chair members of RDC, you have the summary sheet for tracking number 0251-22, date December 15, 2022, an act relating to the budget and finance, resource and development, and Navi Nick Committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council, amending CMY-54-18 to extend through crop year 2028, the Sisasun's Fund guaranteed for the Navajo Nation's annual premiums for the rainfall index pasture, range, land, and forage plot insurance program administered by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Purpose of this legislation is to extend by five years through the end of the crop year 2028, the Sisasun's Fund guaranteed for the Navajo Nation's requirement premiums for the US DOA's rainfall index pasture, range, land, and forage plot insurance program. Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legislation, which will be read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. for tracking number 0251-22, an act relating to budget and finance, resource and development, and Navi Nick Committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council, amending CMY-54-18 to extend through crop year 2028, the Sisasun Fund guaranteed for the Navajo Nation's annual premium for the rainfall index pasture, range, land, and forage plot insurance program administered by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And section one outlines the authority, and section two, the findings, and section three is amending resolution number CMY-54-18. And section four is effective date, and section four is the savings clause. Attaches the first report from the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch, and in a public review summary for legislation number 0251-22, sponsors Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. This legislation was posted on December 15, 2022, at 9:12 p.m. The five-day comment period ended December 20, 2022. There was no comment supporting this legislation, no comments opposing this legislation, no comments recommendation on this legislation. You have attached is the Budget and Finance Committee Committee Report. The Committee Reports are recommended due pass with no amendments. Then you have the Budget and Finance Committee Vote Tally Sheet with four in favor and zero opposed, and Vice Chairman not voting. Chair members of RDC, that is legislation number 0251-22, read into the record. Back to Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second. Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Here a second. Key Allen. Honorable Bagay, thank you. Honorable members of RDC, this legislation moves on to Nabakia Te, and the Council has final authority. Are there any comments or questions? Going twice? Going three times. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote Green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Gay?
Yeah, what's green? Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
I vote Green, Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green, Chairman.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, turn not voting, motion carries on legislation 0251-22. Next, legislation 0261-22. Honorable Stewart is the sponsor. RDC has final authority. Mr. Tahie, could you read this into the record?
Chair members of RDC, you have legislature summary sheet for tracking number 0261-22, date December 19, 2022. Title of the resolution, proposed standing committee resolution, an action relating to Resource and Development Committee, approving the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund project plan for crop year 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021, pursuant to the Sisasun Fund pasture and range and forage expenditure plan enacted by C0, CO-57-16, and amended by CMY-54-18. Purpose of this resolution, if passed, is to prove proving the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund project plan for crop year 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021, pursuant to the Sisasun Fund pasture, range, and forage expenditure plan enacted by C0-57-16, and amended by CMY-54-18. Resource and Development Committee has final authority over this legislation, which will be read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this resolution is Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. for tracking number 060261-22, an action relating to Resource and Development Committee, approving the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund project plan for crop years 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021, pursuant to the Sisasun Fund pasture, range, and forage expenditure plan enacted by CO-57-16, and amended by CMY-54-18. B, enacted, section one, authority, the Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation Council is authorized to exercise oversight over, among other things, water, land, grazing, agriculture, livestock, wildlife, chapter activities, and economic and community development. Two, in NC, section 500C. B, the Navajo Nation Council instructed the Resource and Development Committee to adopt an annual plans for agriculture infrastructure project to be funded through the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund. C, O-57-16, as amended, section four, A6C. Section two, findings. A, on November 3, 2016, the Navajo Nation Council passed council resolution CO-57-16, without exhibits, attached as exhibit one, adopting the Sisasun Fund of pasture, range, and forage expenditure plan pursuant to CD-68-14 and 12, in NC, subsections 2501 through 2508. The President of the Navajo Nation signed it, C057-16, on November 13, 2016. B, among other things, C, CO-57-16, reserve 19,835,612 of Sisasun Fund to guarantee the insurance premium necessary for the nation's participation in the US DOA's pasture, range, land, and forage insurance program for the 2017 and 2018 crop years. CO-57-16, section three, C1. C0, CO-57-16, was subsequently amended by CMY-54-18, without exhibits, attached as exhibit two, to extend the Sisasun Fund Reserve and guaranteed for an additional five years through the end of the 2023 crop year. C, C, CO-57-16, as amended, also requires that net insurance proceeds, A, indemnity payments, B, deposit in the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund and used to fund agriculture infrastructure projects on the Navajo Nation, approved annually by the Resource and Development Committee, after certain conditions are met, e.g., the Budget Finance Committee acts a fund management plan that, among other things, ensure that the Sisasun is reimbursed for any expenditures that the annual amounts are reserved and accumulated to replace the Sisasun Fund guaranteed at the end of 2023. CO-57-16, section four, A6C. D, CO-57-16, as amended by CMY-54-18, defines Agriculture Infrastructure Project as including, but not limited to range, grazing, and livestock, tribal ranch infrastructure, farming, and irrigation, agricultural water development, dams, reservoirs, enclosures, watershed plans for agriculture, agriculture complexes, drought, contingency plan, mitigated measures, area-wide fencing, brand office, and Navajo partition lands of former benefits area projects, including administrative costs. CMY-54-18, section two, CO-57-16, section four, A5C. E, resolution number RDCAU-74-18, with exhibit C attached as exhibit three, enacted the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund Fund Management Plan. F, the USDA for pasture, range, land, and forage infrastructure insurance program remitted net indemnity payments to the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund for crop year 2017 at 17,386,455, and in 2018, 28 million 2,278,209, exhibit six. The Resource and Development Committee adopted resolution number RDCD-100-18, attached as exhibit four, approving the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund project plan for crop year 2017 in the amount of 17,384,159. Exhibit four, exhibit C, and for crop year 2018 in the amount of 19,276,459. Exhibit four, exhibit D, in crop year, in both crop year project plans, 2,833,659, were set aside and reserved to replenish the Sisasun Fund guaranteed as set forth in the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund Fund Management Plan, section 4B3. A crop year 2018 Agriculture Infrastructure Fund project plan for 9,2,750 remains to be approved by the Resource and Development Committee. G, by resolution RDCMA-07-20, when, and in exhibit E, attached as exhibit five, the Resource and Development Committee approved the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund project plan for crop year 2021 with 4 million to be project plan for crop year twenty twenty-one with four million to be distrib- distributed to a hundred and ten chapters for livestock-free products for distribution to community members of the Navajo Nation. H, the Navajo Nation Department of Agriculture has approved appendix one, Navajo Nation Cissusun Fund of Pasture, Range and Forage and for insurance historic performance dated eight eighteen, twenty twenty-two, which is attached as exhibit six. As shown in appendix one, exhibit six, crop year twenty nineteen, premium exceeds the indemnities received by six million, six million, nine hundred and five thousand, one ninety-eight. And as a result, no net indemnities indemnities were deposited into the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund for crop year twenty nineteen. In crop year twenty twenty, thirty-two million, eight hundred twenty-seven. Four fifty, fifty-five was deposited into the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund for crop for the crop year. In crop year twenty twenty-one, seventeen million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and eleven were deposited into the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund. In summary, a total of eighty-nine million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two was placed in Agriculture Infrastructure Fund or from an inception in twenty seventeen through crop year twenty twenty-one. I, the set aside and reserve amounts for crop year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one or a total of eight million, five hundred thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven have been not approved in the annual project plans for the Resource and Development Committee. Since the Cissusun Fund range, pasture, range and forage expenditure plans inception in twenty seventeen, the Cissusun Fund Premium Reserve was used on three occasion to pay a total of twenty-two million, one thousand eight eight oh two in annual premium is due by October first of the respective crop years as follows. One. In crop year twenty seventeen, insurance identity payments were short of the annual premium, therefore the Cissusun Fund Premium Reserve was used to pay nine million, six hundred fifty-five thousand, one thirty-one on September twenty ninth, twenty seventeen. Two, in crop year twenty nineteen, insurance identity payments were short of the annual premiums, therefore the Cissusun Premium Reserve was used to pay twelve million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, four thirty-four on September thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Three, in crop year twenty twenty-one, the insurance identity payments were short of the annual premiums for six tribal ranch leases who enrolled in the Cissusun Fund. Pasture, range and forage expenditure plan, therefore the Cissusun Premium Reserve was used to pay one hundred and ninety thousand, two thirty-seven on November eighth, twenty twenty-one. K. The Navajo Nation Department of Agriculture has provided appendix two pro- proposed year twenty twenty-two Agriculture Infrastructure Fund budget through crop year twenty twenty-one. As of zero eight eighteen, twenty twenty-two, which is attached as exhibit seven. The appendix two exhibit seven is a confirmation of the annual project plans for approval by the Resource and Development Committee, including one, the unattalic, unattalic, unallocated crop year twenty eighteen project plans for in the amount of nine million, two thousand and seven fifty in paragraph F above. Two, the set aside and reserve amounts for crop year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one to replenish the Cissusun Fund guaranteed in the amount of eight million, five hundred thousand, nine seventy-seven in paragraph. I above and three. An amount of a four million to account for the livestock fee distribution allocation approved by the Resource and Development Committee in paragraph G above and exhibit seven, table one. L, the project amounts in appendix two exhibit sevens are estimates subject to change as a result of the fluctuation in the market conditions for part supplies, equipment, raw material, freight, contractual services and actual costs incurred in projects implementation and construction. M, as set forth in exhibit eight, the Navajo Nation's Office of the Controller in the memorandum dated September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two has provided an unaudited income statement and balance sheet for the Navajo Nation Agriculture Infrastructure Fund and identified the unaudited, inappropriate balance of the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund as of fifty-nine million, eight hundred and thirty thousand, five forty-one of August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. In the Department of Agriculture has approved, has prov- provided an executive summary dated zero eight eighteen, twenty twenty-two is attached to exhibit nine. Oh, the executive official review is attached to exhibit ten in section, section three. Approval of the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund Project Plan for Crop Years twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. The nomination hereby approves and adopts their crop years twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Agriculture Infrastructure Fund Project Plan as set forth in appendix two, exhibit seven. Section four, administration of Agriculture Infrastructure Fund Project Plan. The Agriculture Infrastructure Fund Project Plan, project plans adopted herein and shall be administered pursuant to the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund Fund Management Plan enacted by R D C A U dash seventy-four dash eighteen. Section five amendments. The Agriculture Infrastructure Fund Project Plan for crops year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Adopted here in exhibit seven, it may be amended by the Resource and Development Committee from time to time as necessary to fill the mandates of C O dash fifty-seven dash sixteen upon the recommendation of the Division of Natural Resources and Department of Agriculture. Attached as exhibit one, which is the resolution of the Navajo Nation Council, the twenty-third nomination council, second year, twenty sixteen. Resolution number is C zero fifty-seven dash sixteen. Attached to exhibit two, resolution, the Navajo Nation Council, the twenty-third Navajo Nation Council, fourth year, twenty eighteen. Resolution number C M Y dash fifty-four dash eighteen. Attached to exhibit three, resolution, the Resource and Development Committee, the twenty-third Navajo Nation Council, fourth year, twenty eighteen. Resolution number R D C A U dash seventy-four dash eighteen. Attaches exhibit four. Resolution of the Resource and Development Committee, the twenty-third Navajo Nation Council, fourth year, twenty eighteen. Resolution number R D C D dash a hundred dash eighteen. Attached to exhibit five, resolution, the Resource and Development Committee, the twenty-four Navajo Nation Council, third year, twenty twenty-one. R D C M A dash zero seven dash twenty-one. Attached as exhibit six is appendix one, Navajo Nation, the pasture range forage insur- insurance historical performance. Attached as exhibit seven, which is appendix to the proposed year twenty twenty-two Agriculture Infrastructure Fund project budget through crop year twenty twenty-one as of zero eight eighteen dash twenty-two. Attached to exhibit eight. Which is a memorandum dated September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. From Robert Willie Account Manager Office of the Controller, subject zero one six four dash zero one eight nine seven eight dash approving and adopting A I F project plans. C Y twenty twenty-two. Agriculture Infrastructure Fund, August twenty twenty-two. Attached as exhibit nine, which is the executive summary dated zero eight eighteen to twenty twenty-two. E O R document number zero one eight nine seven eight, propose Resource and Development Committee Resolution approving and adopting the Agriculture Infrastructure Fund A I F project plans and budget listing for calendar year twenty twenty-two. Attached as exhibit ten, which is the the executive official review. Document number zero one eight nine seven eight, date issue zero seven, zero eight dash twenty twenty-two. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch in a public review summary for legislation number zero six zero two six one dash two two, sponsors Honorable Wilson C Stewart Junior. This legislation was posted on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at nine twenty-one P M. The five-day comment period ended December twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation and no comments opposing this legislation, no comments recommendation on this legislation. Then you have the second report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch in the Public Review Summary for Legislation Number zero two six one dash two two. Sponsors Honorable Wilson C Stewart Junior, this legislation was posted on December nineteenth at nine twenty-one P M, the five-day current period ended December twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation, no comments opposing this legislation. There was one common recommendation on this legislation, which is by the Northern Agency Grazing Committee. The common resolution by the Northern Agency Committee is a resolution of the Northern Arizona Committee, Aris- Agency Committee, Grazing Committee, Resolution Number N A G C dash twelve dash thirteen dash twenty-two dash one. Requesting and supporting the Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation Council to allocate Agriculture Infrastructure Fund in the amount of nine hundred thousand to procure heavy equipments for the Northern Agency Grazing Committee for earthing dam mitigation in the Northern Agency Chapters and Communities. This resolution was passed by vote of fifteen, is there vote of fifteen in favors, zero opposed and five abstaining on the fifteenth day of December of twenty twenty-two. Chair members of R D C, that is ru- resolution number zero two six one dash two two read into the record. Back to Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahi. Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second. Yeah. Honorable McGee, thank you.
Uh Chairman, I'll second that.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Thank you. Honorable Members of R D C, R D C has final authority over this legislation. I do have a question and amendment, so I'll give twenty minutes to Honorable Stewart. Honorable Stewart, could you identify your agents as well?
I wish you good morning, Chairman. Not a, um, noncommittee members or staff or Jatahi, thank you for reading the legislation on its entirety, the record for us this morning. I would like to see a yes, agent, so the A, Mr. Watchman, though, Mr. Ham Hill, she can't get A, she will probably dish up the list regarding this legislation. Um, Shana, Chairman. Mr. Watchman?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, also, uh, folks that are, uh, listening in. Uh, as the, as it was read into the record, the, um, history of how the, uh, Nation, um, Council and the executive established a, a infrastructure fund as well as the mechanism to receive monies from the U S D A through indemnities. This rolls back, um, and here's how we are, um, identifying monies through, um, our insurance policy. Uh, moving forward, um, through an application process. Uh, we are, um, we have vetted out, um, projects that are in line to be, um, shovel-ready or work within a reasonable time under, uh, milestones. But within a year's time, hopefully we'll have these projects, um, completed. Um, the lengthy, um, discussion or excuse me, the ra- reading to the record sort of gives the history, as I mentioned, but at this point, um, the C S N, um, monies that are, that were set aside basically used as a credit uh, for annual indemnity payments. And it was read into the record that over the past five years or four and a half years, um, since this has been established, we have used the fund and also reimbursed the fund. Currently, we do not owe any monies to the C S N. The previous legislation disauthorizes that credit to continue, uh, for another, um, uh, five years. Um, hopefully that will, uh, meet the council, um, approval. But in this, in particular to this legislation, the projects that are, are listed are, um, applications, so they were vetted out, um. The, uh, the, the labeling of the dollar amounts, um. There, there has been some discussions since, um, some of the sponsors have, uh, are not, not, not available anymore, so we do feel, we do view a friendly, friendly amendment as, um, Northern Agency has provided resolution. We like to re- recommendations where to, you know, to use, to take monies from. And also, uh, we do have, uh, other legisla- other amendments that were, um, uh, Resource Committee heard, um, example be Wolf Springs. Uh, we wanted, um, as we, um, looked at some of the projects and moving on, as I mentioned, that some of these projects, they, they have, they have, um, the sponsor or the, um, initiative has, um, sort of dwindled back to maybe, um, studies and not the whole amount would be utilized. Um, and for that, uh, Mr. Chair and also members of the committee, um, as we get to the amendment portion, we could make recommendations to where it could be taken from. They won't impact any of the other projects that we feel are shovel-ready or moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Watchman. Honorable Stewart, back to you. Honorable Stewart? Honorable Stewart?
Chairman?
I'm here. I was having problems with my laptop, Chairman.
Okay, uh. Are you, are you done with your presentation?
Yes, Chairman, with the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Um, Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Do you facilitate this part for me? I will request an amendment.
Uh, yes, Chairman, I wish you. So here's a, proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Um. I asked Ms. Khan to draft an amendment for Northern Agent C Council grazing officials to procure a bulldozer, a truck and a trailer to haul it. And it's been sent to us. And I'd like to make that motion. Um. And have Mr. Tahi read that into the record, Honorable Vice Chair.
Wishy, uh. You, um, Chairman, uh, committee members. Uh, Mr. Tahi, can you please read the proposed amendment into the record?
Vice Chair Walker, members of R D C, we have amendment number one for legislation is zero two six one dash two two. The amendment reads as follows, paragraph four, line twenty-nine, insert a new paragraph. I as follows, one, the Northern Agency Grazing Committee through resolution N A G C dash twelve dash thirteen dash twenty-two dash one requests nine hundred thousand to be allocated for the cost of a bulldozer, semi-truck, a semi-trailer, heavy equipment insurance and personal operating expenses for earthing dam mitigation in District nine, twelve and thirteen grazing region of the Navajo Nation. Resolution N A G C dash twelve dash thirteen dash twenty-two dash one is attached as exhibit eleven. As a mem- amendment is made to exhibit seven, appendix two, table C. Three C as follows. In N D A Navajo Nation Agriculture and Center Programs. Strike through ten million. Insert and nine million, one hundred thousand. Insert District nine, twelve, thirteen bulldozer, semi-truck, semi-trailer, heavy equipment insurance, personal operating expenses for earthing dam mitigation, nine hundred thousand. Renumber or reletter succeeding paragraph sections and exhibits accordingly. If necessary, this amendment shall supersede inconsistent language contained in any other committee amendments which shall be conformed to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Services with notices to the sponsor of the legislation is hereby authorized to make necessary grammical changes. Vice Chair Walker, members of R D C, that is amendment number one read into the record. Back to you, Vice Chair Walker.
Here, I'm Mr. Tahi for that reading, um, committee members. Very, uh, second to that motion. Is very, uh, second to the motion made by, uh, Honorable Nurse. Motion for amendment number one.
Second, Stewart.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Uh, uh, second, offering that second. I wish, um, committee members.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, this is Mariana Khan.
Yes, Ms. Khan.
Thank you very much for taking my um comment. I have, when I was listening to the amendment, I realized that I didn't specifically request that exhibit eleven be added to the legislation, and I have just sent that as number five to the amendment. Um if um, uh, Mr. Tahi would read um number five to the amendment, that just specifically adds ex- exhibit eleven, which is the resolution of the Northern um Agency Grazing Committee. Mister Vice Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Mr. Tahi, you um go over the um document there that mentioned by Ms. Khan.
Vice Chair Walker, Members of R D C. Including in amendment number one into legislation is zero two six one dash two-two. The amendment reads as follows, five, add exhibit eleven to the legislation. Vice Chair Walker, Member of R D C, that is amendment, the amendment and also included amendment number one read into the record. Back to you, Vice Chair Walker.
You, uh, Mr. Tahi. Agashin, um.
Uh, thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker. I met with um Northern Agency Grazing Committee. And throughout the nation, we're faced with damaged earth and dams. And they requested a bulldozer and a truck to haul the bulldozer with the trailer to share among twenty chapters in Northern Agency. And. Navajo Nation Agriculture Incentive Programs, ten millions. Um Burnham and a lot of these, um, they have a lot of permittees in that, in that region. Also, um, in other areas of Northern Agency, Utah, Judo, as well as um Arizona here in Northern Region. So. You, um Chairman Nez, that uh explanation on the amendment. The uh Committee Members. Then. Honorable Daniels, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Hado, the pro temp chair, Hado, sir, chair. Hado, my good chair. I don't know, Hado. Hado, Nareedam, not for bed, then I'll be tired, I don't know, not a star, that should job. Be, 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 the hockey, Hado amendment. Eh, Hado, Nareedam. On such case, I thought, I didn't wait, um. delegate free uh legislation. He does not can I, he had a. Nareedam. Chapters, heavy equipment, but the hand, but the, but the. Um, wait on, I don't know, Nareedam. Some chapters, eh. It is God, uh trucks, I thought, I don't know, trailers. I call, I cry, oh, just eh, one of them. Hella, eh, the license, the law. Uh, heavy. Heavy equipment, they spot, eh, I don't know, C D L. C D L, Nareedam, 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 Nareedam. Oh, that's a, that's a, you know, that's a, at the chapter level. So, eh, that's a, upon such case, on the way down, eh. Uh, although, although, when I used to work for Nekka. Uh, I've had. That eh, you know, they got those, that, that. Ayoh, ayoh, by now, that's a. Nareed, you, the transporter, these uh, the, the, these equipment, who read those, that, that, eh. Call, I don't know, Nareed main, that, that. Ay, ayoh, eh. Ayoh, by now, that's a, no, eh, eh, eh. Oh, so yeah, oh, they be. I don't know, Hado, Nareedam. Hella eh. Uh, who, who's gonna operate the, the equipment? Who's gonna be driving the, 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 the equipment? So, Hado, that eh, by now, it is, it's a, Hado. I don't know, Nareedam, Navajo Nation Water Resources. So eh, what eh, ki, ah, eh, you did, eh. Nareedam, that, that, eh. Um, to get, eh, that, that, eh, and that, eh. Eh, 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 eh.
Um, ah, what I go A Ben Edin is go Ba'ahn, Ba'ahn, send oh. Edi gi A O'Korop, uh, sh- area, gi ba'adin shkaid, gi ben na'adishna'ka. Ayu do'tan, sisti do'ho'do, di, edi desh kinsan. So, um, Honorable, uh, Pro Tem Chair, uh, Mr. Walker, Kodo Honorable Walker. If you would give time to my agent, uh, Tanner Begay, he's from Northern Grazing Committee. And he's also got a CDL, uh, ju', if you'd give him time, I would appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, uh, Chairman Nez, for your, uh, response to the, uh, question and comments posed by Honorable Daniels. Um, I go, uh, your, your, um, representative, your agent, Edo, eh, she, probably the, uh, the Begay, Tanner Begay, you have the floor?
Good morning, uh, Resources and Development Committee. Uh, here hat, um, Shenanah, Shenanah, I am Tanner Begay. The District Thirteen Grazing Official with Tishosakat Burnham Chapter. And, uh, thank you, uh, Honorable Council Delegates for allowing me to speak here today. And for motioning and seconding the amendment for this legislation to add the allocation of the nine hundred thousand dollars for the heavy equipment procurement. Um, the Northern Agency Grazing Committee has an extensive amount of earth and dams that are in need of repair. And during rainfall, a lot of earth dams do not have the ability to withstand or hold the water for storage purposes. Uh, earth dams are considered a water infrastructure and is very beneficial to livestock owners. For example, during the drought season, there are several earth dams in need of repair and were in conditions unacceptable to store water and reserve it for livestock. A grazing permit holder was in dire need of help because there wasn't any water. And she had called me for assistance for around forty-six head of cattle. And according to the Institute of Agriculture and Natural Resources, a cow will consume one gallon per one hundred pounds of body weight. And that will double to two pounds per one hundred pounds, two gallons to per one hundred pounds of body weight in the cold season. So to resolve this lady's issue, uh, the cattle were herded to earth dam approximately five miles to an area that had an earth dam that was repaired and held a lot of water. And the Northern Agency has a lot of earth dams that need extensive repairs. And limited resources and staff at the Department of Water Resources. It has been determined by many entities, including the Department of Agriculture and the Department of Water Resources, that the amount of earth dam projects to repair is too much for the Department of Water Resources staff to complete. And this heavy equipment will directly improve the lives of many individuals in the Northern Agency by providing range and pasture improvements. And I do want to let the, uh, Honorable Council Delegates with the Resource and Development Committee that, um, I do have a commercial driver's license to operate heavy equipment. And, um, I, I do want to let you know that I have been, uh, operating commercial vehicles for the past two years. And I have maintained, uh, my license and have maintained all the standards with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. And could provide the commercial driving transportation and the oper- operations of the heavy equipment for the Northern Agency. And we were discussing it over at the Nanazad Chapter and it was, um, recommended that Nanazad Chapter does have a, uh, large chapter facility. And, uh, it was proposed that the heavy equipment could be stored there uh, during the duration of its use under the Northern Agency Grazing Committee. Now, the Northern Gr- Agency Grazing Committee understands that, um, we would like the support of RDC to have this equipment. And that it can also be used, uh, for other purposes under the, uh, Plan of Operation. In the Plan of Operation, the main purpose would be for earth dam mitigation and repairs. And other purposes could be used for flood mitigation or road repairs and, uh, weed management project plans, uh, with the BIA. And we are requesting, uh, your approving of this legislation that will, again, directly improve the lives of many individuals. And the Agricultural Infrastructure Fund should be for the producers, the permit holders. And that it is their economic revenue. And that the Econo- Agricultural Infrastructure Fund was created for agricultural, uh, range and pasture improvement projects on the Navajo Nation. And that is why we are requesting it from the Resources and Development Committee. Uh, here hat, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Begay. The, um, information and, uh, speaking to the needs here, uh, for the amendment. Um, Chairman Nez, back to you.
Um, that will be our response, um, Pro Tem Chair Walker, thank you.
Agashina, I go, uh, Honorable Chee Daniels, and Shenanah, any follow-ups?
Um, thank you, Kodo. Pro Tem Chair, Kodo, I don't know, Kodo, Shenanah, Kodo. Um, Chairman Nez, Kodo, um, along with your agent, Kodo. Kodo, the amendment, Kodo. Ben Edini Yaha Gi, Kodo, sheha, I don't know, I need, Kodo. Um, and the, uh, I don't know, yeah, peh, peh, Hugunakunni, Kodo. The great dam, she don't eat the Gita. I don't know, hey, hey, la, Edin, Spah, Toleh. Hey, yeah, but, peh, Hugunakunni, yeah, Koka. So, Kodo, the great dam, um. Um, Chairman Nez, Kodo, um. Kodo, Missouri, with the, the other agencies. Missouri, um. Um, amendment, the keep modify, in there, uh, Ba'ahn, that's, um, for you, Kodo. To include the other agencies, uh, Kodo, dam. In, 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 in Western, Jana, yeah, Kodo. Representing our Western Agency on RDC. I, yeah, go, eh, in the hot, eh, though. Of course, the, I need, and, Kodo, Navajo Nation Water Resources. I see that, uh, you, she, she had that, um, and then, huh. I don't know, Kado, I don't know, Kedi, that, uh, we're gonna be getting, uh, snow. I don't know, uh, it's a house in dash, Kino, Torgito, uh, da, Leho. So, that, uh, that, yeah, I just, that, uh, the, uh, so, you, the, yeah, Kodo. At least, uh, one those, uh, those, uh, that, the, Kodo, Kedi, Agency, the, Kehla. You, Honsko, You, Honsko, Shina, Hado, Shina, Es, Es, Eh, G, Sada, 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 Nishan, De, Ba, Hado, G, Da, Ba, Eh, Di. Hado, Kui, Da, Shada, Ya, Shina, Ya, Eh, G, Nisho, Hado, Ba, Da, One, But, Keho, Da, Tadi, Da. Um, um, Hado, Dab. Mo- Modify, Injaha, Sabi, Da, For, You, Ba, Ba, Tad, Keho, Da. That, Tadi, Da, Hado, To, Include, The, The Other Four Agencies, Hado, Naga, Edam. Northern, Do, Nana, Naga, Edam, The Other, The Four Agencies. Um, Eh, Di, Eh, Hado, Da, Bah, Sido, Le, Hado, Dab. Nana, Hado, Mr. Vice Chair, Pro Temp Chair, um, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Daniels. Um, requesting, uh, to modify the amendment proposed by Honorable Nez. Uh, question, Honorable Chair, Que, Nat, Uh, Bah, Hadi, Ti. Oh, Eh, Hata, No, Ked, Amendment, Injagi, Modified, Or, Nish. For other agencies, Eh, Do, Or, Ta, Or, Nek, The Northern, Bayin, Ki, Di, Ah, Hata, Oh. Nekon, Hinand, Uh, Honorable Daniels. Ina, Vansun, Kis, Nat, Uh, Bah, Hansi, Chairman Nez.
Uh, Gushila, Pro Temp Chair, um, Honorable Walker, Ado, Honorable Daniels. Da, Di, Hado, um. Altsak, Alnaj, Yaha, Ji, Ki, Uh, Uh, Ni, Uh, Hata, Chud, Ni, Le, Navajo Nation, Do, Other Agencies, Ki, Do, Water Resources. Eh, Da, Eh, Then, Ni, Di, Ah, Ni, Then, Oh. Ah, Hata, Eh, Gushila, Bam, Swak, Keshan, And, I, Not, Leningi, Resource and Development Committee. Do, Shal, Ak, We Can Modify The Amendment And Include The Other Four, Four Agencies. Eastern Agency, Fortify Agency, Central Agency, And Western Agency. Ah, Hata, Eh, Gond, Abeg, Asha, We Can Ask Ms. Khan To Go Ahead And Modify The Amendment To Fit. So Each Agency Could Have This Equipment And Also To Have, Like Mr. Tanner Begay Stated, He Is Certified For With A CDL To Operate The Heavy Equipment Itself. Of course, With All Five Agencies, They Should Have Somebody With A CDL To Operate As Well. So I Will Go Ahead And Concur With The Modification. But Also, Nle, Be, So, Ha, Nishan, Eh, Yaha, There's The Navajo Nation Department Of Agriculture's, Navajo Nation Agriculture Incentive Programs. Ki, Ten Millions, Nell. Of course, Abi, Ya, Gond, Eh, Yaha, Horse Project, DNA Testing Equipment. Eh, Aja, Eh, The Former DNR Director, Eh, Di, Koh, Yo, Ked, Nde, Eh, Ado, Ki, Aja, Ha, Nde, Nde, Be, Gah, Di, The Three Hundred And Fifty Thousand, Bakha, Ki. Ado, Sache, Ki, Ah, Hada, Oh, Da, Bakha, Bunsh, Eh. Of course, From Those Two, Asha, Be, Gah, Do, Nell, Shunant, I, Not, Leningi, Back To You, Honorable, Um, Pro Temp Chair, Honorable Walker.
Haga shing, um, thank you for that, um, response, um, and consideration. Uh, Chairman Nez, For, The Amount, Ki, To, Eh, Quage, Uh, Maybe You Can, That Can Be Specified. Then, Uh, That Way, Uh, Khan Can Insert That In The Proposed Amendment Language. Chairman Nez.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm a Pro Temp Chair, This Is Leo Watchman, Could I Offer A, Um, A Comment?
Okay, Haga shing, Mr. Watchman. Go Ahead, You Had For.
Uh, Thank You, Uh, As Mentioned Early When I, I Spoke, Uh, We Viewed, Um, The Northern Agency As A Friendly Amendment To The Overall Project Listing. Um, Keep In Mind That This, This Venture Is Sort Of A, A Pilot Project. Um, The Northern Agency, Um, Sort Of Mold Over Some, The Entity They Would Be The Agent, Uh, Basically They, Where They Would House Such A Equipment, Also Maintenance And So For. Um, The Amount That's Targeted Is, Is This Amount Which Would Have To Be Budgeted. And Through That Process, If Is Approved, And We Would Go And Do A Budget, Um, A Budget Form And Look At Would We Privatize The, Um, The Equipment Operator? Possible, Possibility? Due The Fact That The Current AIF Fund Has Already Bought Four Bulldozers For Water Resources? Or Three Bulldozers, I Think, Almost Four? Um, The Problem We're Having Is The Operator. Uh, They're Unable To Get, You Know, Recruitment. So That's A Challenge This Pilot Project Will Be Looking At. As, Um, You Know, To Up, To Have A Bulldozer Operator In Our Current Pay Scale Under Navajo Nation, Um, Uh, Fund, Or Salaries Is Substantially Lower. So That's The Thing That We're Mentioning During The, Um, I Guess The Meeting We Had At Nenanzad. Just Wanted To Offer That As A, As Some The Challenge We're Having. Um, Keep In Mind, This, This Is Not The Own, Is Not One Time Funding. Um, The Agricultural Infrastructure Fund Will Have Funding Moving Forward. Um, I Know That This Is Overdue For Three Years And We Like To Get On Track To Have A Consistency. But We Don't Know How This Will Work. Um, I Just Want To Mention That. Um, Keep In Mind That Water Resources Did Receive Equipment Money Up, Upwards Around Four Million Dollars. And To This Day, Um, The Performance Has Not, You Know, Cut Into The Overwell, As Mr. Tanner Mentioned, Um, You Know, Those Overwell Needs Out There. So I Just Wanted To Give Some Explanations. But If There Is A, A Thought Of Utilizing More Monies Within The, The Incentive Program, Um, We Would, You Know, To Order And Buy Equipment, It, It Takes A Little While. But We Also Have To Find A Entity That Which Would House That. Since It's Navajo Nation Property, Uh, It Was Mentioned Earlier, But Nenanzad Would, You Know, Be The Entity That Would House And, Um, You Know, Maintenance That. We, We, We Don't Have Any Other Locations, But I Would Recommend That We Look At Maybe Additional Nine Hundred Thousand, Or Maybe Additional, Maybe Eighteen, One Point Eight Million? And With, With Agencies. Keep In Mind, We Still Have, We Do Have Three Other Bulldozers Out There With Water Resources That Are Currently Working On Earth And Dams. Thank You, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Thank You, Uh, Mr. Watchman For The, Um, Additional Information And Something To Consider, Uh, For Committee To Consider. Ashanant, Uh, Que, The Watchman, Nat, Uh, Yaha, Zigi, Nabohan, Ta. Eh, Eh, Do, Ashtang, Hi, Chait, Eh, Do, Nish. Yi, Pesot, Abandit, Ado, Shid, Shidna, Na'ar, Azoli, Pe'na, Anishe. Shidav, Eh, Goh, Chait, Oh, Peit, Or, Nish. Eh, Ben, Ashi, Eh, It, I, Nah, Tashina, Da, Hatal, Goli, Nasko, Shani, Yeh, Do, Nant, Ak, Ho. Ad, Uh, Uh, Question, Bayat, He, La, Yat, Eh, Do, Nish, Chairman Nez, And Then, Um, Honorable Daniels, Que, Eh, Be, Na, Ha, Zigi, Shing, Dah, Hinan, For Chairman Nez.
Um, Thank You For The Response From Mr. Watchman Here As Far As Him Making A Clarification And How The Navajo Nation Purchased Four Bulldozers For Department Of Water Resources. Yo, Hata, Eh, Gogo, Aja, Operators, Ki, Ba, Then. Bayit, Ob, Which Is, La, Gida, Zep, Dos, Seta, Eh, Da, Zep, In, Uh, On, Az, So. Of Course, To See How This Works With Northern Agency Would Also Be Something That We Can Observe And See How They Do It. And Then Later, Perhaps, This Is, This Is Not The Only Time, Eh, Hado, Agriculture Infrastructure Fund, Ki, Ar, Na, Be, So, Me, Ch'An, Na, Nish. Of Course, Eh, Ben, Ashin, Goshin, Chait, Aw, Shing. Hado, Yi, In, Ked, Ki, Um, Honorable Daniels. Uh, Uh, Ayah, Zigi, Tati, Da, Uh, Hata, Modifications, And Eh, Do, Da, Da, Ch'Ad, Eh, Di, Saha, Don, Nish, Pilot Project, Ki. So, Eh, Eh, Hata, Um, Back To You, Uh, Pro Temp Chair, Walker.
Thank You, Uh, Chairman, Chairman Nez. Um, Honorable Che Daniels, Uh, Hado, Nat, Uh, Naha, Oti, Uh, Eh, Da, The, Ban, Sinan, Kis. Eh, Shina, Na, Hid, Ah.
Um, Thank You, Hado, The Pro Temp Chair, Yeh, Hado, Shit, Che. Ar, Nda, Hado, Da, Shunana, Um, Chairman Nez, Hado, Amendment, Ben, Ni, Yaha, He. So, Hado, Then, Junoi, Ba, Bah, Oti, Hado, Pilot Project. Hado, Da, Yaha, Zi, Hado, Dab, Mr. Watchman, Hado, Department Of Ag. Um, So, Ben, Ashi, Go, Hado, Naga, Edam, Ba, Ban, Just, Keho, Hado, Di, Hado, Ki, Di, Ki, We, Eh, Do, Oh, Nta, One, De, Shnashin, To, Eh. Eh, Shana, Naga, Edam, Western Agency, No, No, Western Agency, Um, Northern Agency, Hey. Eh, Shana, Hey, Da, Da, Do, Nish, Ki, Aja. Ado, Nana, Hado, Oh, Shing, Eh, Kishka, Yeah, Shidi, Eh, So, Bida. Eh, Ked, Then, Shunana, Kishka, And, Bida, Oh. Ado, Nana, Hado, Naga, Edam, The, 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 The Bulldozers That Were, That Was Purchased For Water Resources. So, Eh, Or, Na, Na, Maybe, Dab. What We Can Do, Dab, Maybe We Can Assign Those, Uh, Dozers To Some Of The, The Agencies. Do, Naga, Edam, Eh, Shib, Na, Oh, Na, So, I Don't Know If They're, They're Operator, Uh, But, The, Hui, Ye, Eh, Da, But, Na, Oh, Na, Blah. Ado, Nana, Da, Do, The Wage, Eh, Da, I Don't Know If The Wage Is Too Low. Eh, Shib, Na, Do, Den, Then, Dash, So, Hado, Zod, Do, Na, Shil, Shil, So, Aja. Of Course, Eh, Goh, Eh, Nta, Eh, Da, Shunana, Biga, Aja, No, Na, Blah, Neniki. So, Eh, Eh, Da, 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 Nish, Ki, Shin, So, Aji, Ki, Ba, Kwe, Ziki, Eh, Do, The Shont, Oh, Oh, The, Na, Ta. Eh, Shana, Eh, Da, Chait, Ha, Da, Da, Do, Eh, Chait, Ha, Da, Juno, Shit, Da, Do, At Least. So, Hado, Junoi, Haha, Eh, Hado, Much, Begay, Junoi, Anhat, Nha, Hado, Um. Uh, Ani, Hato, Eh, Hado, Naga, Edam. Um, At The Local Level, Leader, Uh, The League, Hado, Naga, Edam. At The Local Level, Especially Great Official, For Number Of Years, Uh, Been Great Official For Number Of Years, Koda, Uh, At The Local Level. So, Nta, Eh, Ki, Eh, Ya, Da, Da, Ba, Ba, Hoo, Goo, Nsa, Wai, Tish, Eh, Eh, Hado, Naga, Edam. Earth And Dams, So, Be, Eh, Da, Do, Need To Repair, Repair Earth And Dams. So, Eh, Tish, Eh, Bida, Eh, Ha, Eh, So, Hado, So, Hado, Naga, Edam.